Dr. Miller, you may proceed.
Good evening, everyone. At this juncture, we are meeting solely to vote to go into executive session. Ms. Williams, would you please read the closing statement recorded?
Thank you. Madam Chair, I move that upon a motion that has been properly recorded and adopted, the Board of Education of Prince George's County meet in closed session pursuant to section 3-305, General Provisions Article Annotated Code of Maryland to address the following: To consult with counsel to obtain legal advice on a legal matter, to consult with staff, consultant, and other individuals about attending or potential litigation. Section 3-505, should I read that also?
Yes.
Okay. Section 3-505, P. 7 and 8, this meeting is closed to deliberate adjudicate two appeals which is outside their purview of the Open Meetings Act, and review legal advice on a legal matter regarding a contract and related matters, including the discussion of potential litigation under section 3-305, P. 7 and 8 of the General Provisions article. The student board member is invited to attend after the appeal has been adjudicated.
May I have a second?
Well, I have to read it.
Oh.
Sorry. Colleagues, it has been properly... Oh, that's you. I'm sorry. Your turn.
May I have a second?
Okay. Madam Chair, I would like to make an amendment.
Yes.
I would like to ask for a friendly amendment to include to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this body has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals.
We would need to take a motion on that to amend. What is the parliamentary procedure for an amendment?
An amendment to the stated motion?
Yes.
I can also make a substitute motion if that is preferred.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you just admit.
I would like to make it a substitute motion to discuss the employment, to have all the items that Ms. Williams read as well as mine as a substitute motion on the floor.
Okay, so one of the concerns with respect to that is obviously the Board Office has advertised and given notice to the public the consent agenda items as were identified by Ms. Williams. So, you know, the Board would need to consider that, you know, with respect to not being able now to give timely notice of additional potential items now being added to your agenda.
Yes, Mr. Thomas, I understand. I believe I understand what you're saying. I also do want to note that this meeting became a meeting yesterday. So if we're talking about timely notice, I don't know if that is also included in the conversation or not.
Well, the Chair called for an emergency executive session and was given and gave all Board members the 24-hour notice of the request, I mean, well, not the request, that I was calling a 20, an executive session. So I think that at this point, your recommendation or your amendment becomes moot because it was I. And in order for your amendment to have been accepted or included, you would have needed to get five people, five other Board members, or four other Board members, including yourself, to make five to request an emergency meeting or to have the agenda amended.
So my amendment is, is my amendment, Mr. Thomas, in order? Is my substitute motion in order?
Well, I'm going to concur with the Board Chair in this instance with respect to the placement of items on the agenda. She is correct with respect to citing the applicable Board policy on how items are properly added to an agenda. So your issue with respect to discussing the broader personnel issues was not properly added as an agenda item. So I do concur with the Board Chair on that. And I'd also note that obviously the Board has a meeting scheduled literally in two days on the 11th. So that would provide, you know, another opportunity to address the issue that you may want to present, Ms. Ahmed, on Thursday's evening, on Thursday's meeting.
Okay, so just to be clear, any substitute motion that's made on a motion to close executive session is out of order?
Right. So at this point, the motion on the floor is to close executive session and to have the items for discussion on the agenda limited to those that were specifically listed as part of the public notification for this meeting.
Okay, but...
And I think your motion was to expand those items to include the additional one that you asked for. The Board Chair has stated her position as far as the timeliness and manner in which a Board member can request the addition of items to an agenda. That has not occurred, so I am concurring with the Board Chair's opinion on that. And I'm also noting that the next Board meeting is that in two days, and I'm sure that there will be opportunities for you as well as other Board members to ensure that items are properly on the agenda as you deem necessary.
Okay.
Ms. Queen?
Yes?
Your hand is up.
Oh, yes. Okay, you're calling on me. Yes, I just have a question. You know, I know I came in a little late. And the agenda has already been set, and it seems like my question is similar to what Ms. Redd's question is. Because we all have a meeting, and we all are called together. If we had issues as a Board, why couldn't we discuss it and address these issues and bring other issues up for this meeting? Even if we may not be able to put it, but I'm still not understanding why it could not be put on the agenda to discuss it or talk about it.
Again, I requested an emergency meeting for the sole purpose of having this executive session. And one item was to be discussed, just one item. And it's a legal issue, and that was the purpose of calling the executive session.
And I understand you're saying it was a legal issue and it's one item, but when other Board members have issues, and I'm listening to Mr. Thomas and I'm hearing what he's saying, but we are one Board. And I know you may be the Chair, no disrespect to you, Dr. Miller, but if other Board members are requesting something, we all have the same authority. There's no big guys, no big us, and y'all don't want me to get in and say it, and most of us are elected, not appointed. But, so when someone brings something to a Board, and if they bring something to you as a Chair, it should be listened to to think about even bringing... No, I understand you saying you brought for this one reason, but we are a Board. Let's listen to each other. And then these people, they have, I mean, our constituents here that we're working with, they have rights, and they should be able to bring these things up. And it should not be blocked from bringing it up just because some of you guys don't want to hear it. We need to be dealing with this before it get worse. And I'm telling you, with some of the things you guys are doing, and Dr. Miller, it's only going to make it worse. So I'm telling you now that you guys need to, for us to come together before we be looking like the Board passed, that we need to come together. And you guys need to listen to some of the things and understand why these changes are needed.
Thank you, Ms. Queen. And to follow up on your concern, if in fact there are issues that needed to be discussed, the Board members had the opportunity to request an emergency meeting just as I did when the issue came up. I requested it, and it was put on the, well, it was, the notice was sent out to the public, and here we are. So if you and any other Board member have some items or issues you want to discuss, then that can, we can do that on Thursday or a future meeting. Or you, Queen, can get four of the members to call for an executive, an emergency executive session. And you have to state the reason and purpose for it. So it's not limited to tonight. You want to have one tomorrow, and you have five, there are five of you who want to have a discussion or executive session, you have authority to do that.
Okay, so my last question is for the meeting that we're having on the 11th. It was certain things that are supposed to be put on the agenda. They have been put ahead. Are these things on the agenda?
The agenda has been posted.
That's not my question. Are the things that were supposed to be put on the agenda, are they on the agenda?
When you say supposed to be put on?
So it was a request, and matter of fact, it wasn't just a request. We voted on certain things, actually even to be elected. And I know it was certain things that are supposed to be put on the agenda, and I'm hearing that some of these things have not been put on the agenda. So I hear you call this emergency meeting, but are we going to do things right? We need to do things right. So if we as a Board vote, and this is before you came in, Dr. Miller, voted, and this is a democratic process, you guys, whether some of you may not agree with it, it doesn't matter because it was a whole two years that I didn't agree with a lot of things that was done, but I was here and I supported the Board because we're a Board. So the democratic process changed with the vote to make some changes. And it's things that should be on the agenda that I'm hearing, that was voted to be put on the agenda, that has not been put on the agenda. So my question to you and to our attorney, Mr. Thomas, because I know you know, and to our executive director, who should be really giving you good guidance, is it on the agenda?
You asking me the question? What's on the agenda is what is put, what that which has been posted. Now, you are saying what you heard, Ms. Queen. I don't know what you've heard, Board Member Queen. I've put on the agenda the items. We have a lot of items. And I have had concerns about what to put on the agenda. And according to policy, the Board Chair has the authority to put the items on the agenda. We have two meetings this month. So if it doesn't go, if it's too crowded, I mean, the agenda is too loaded for the 11th, then it could go on the 25th. So I'm not understanding why we're having a debate about what should go, excuse me, what should go on tonight? Because I did request this emergency meeting tonight, and it was not for discussion in terms, the emergency request was to discuss a legal issue, and that was it. That was solely the purpose of this. Now, if you had an issue about what did not appear on the scheduled agenda for Thursday, then you could have made a request to have five members to have an emergency executive session to discuss why, whatever items that you feel should have been, to discuss personnel issues, whatever, all of that that Ms....
I hear you.
Whatever Ms. Med brought up.
I hear you, Dr. Miller, but I don't think that it's just me having an issue. I think that date, that to be on the agenda was discussed at one of our meetings, and the date of February 11th was given, that when this is going to be happening. So not February 24th, not March, and that's my issue. And I hear that you're saying that you're a Board Chair, but just remember as a Chair, you have to work with the rest of your colleagues. If we don't work together, we will never get anywhere, okay?
And your message is well taken, Ms. Queen.
Okay.
Working together, and that is what I have attempted to do. However, it seems that I keep receiving threats, what I perceive as bail threats, and I'm not going to get into that right now, because we have two hearings that we have to go into. And really, it becomes, the point becomes moot about discussion of anything other than what has been posted for the emergency meeting, and that is to present this, after the two hearings, to discuss a legal matter. Ms. Sonia, Ms. Miller. Ms. Williams.
Yeah.
Your hand is up.
Oh, no, I think you covered it. It's all about process to me. And there was a, I just wanted to add that there is a process to putting things on the agenda. And as the Chair who facilitates the meeting, she has the right and the authority to determine what is put on the agenda, when it's properly presented. Now, there has been a lot of information presented just this past week which was outside of the process of scheduling a meeting. And so I know that there were some things brought to the Chair for review this week. And you all know that our agenda items are posted the Friday before the Thursday meeting. And so I think it's important to not only work together, but work with the process. And so unfortunately, the items that were asked to be presented were not presented before the agenda was posted. And so I think that there should be some give and take here, and for people to ask for things to be posted at the last minute, that is not giving your Board members and Board colleagues the courtesy to thoroughly review the information, to make an informed decision. And so that's all I have to add. Thank you.
Mr. Lawrence?
I have a question for Mr. Thomas. What, what, out of the statement that the Vice Chair read, what is the line that is used for oral arguments? Because we had a previously scheduled oral argument, and so what line in the Open Meetings Act statement that Ms. Williams read pertains to that, my question is to Mr. Roger Thomas. Oh, you're mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Right. So the reference was that oral arguments on personnel appeals are not subject to the Open Meetings Act, and that was the reference that Ms. Williams read as part of her motion to close the meeting.
No, I understand that, but there are several categories that she read. I'm asking specifically which item on that list to read into executive session applies to oral arguments.
Well, it would be, the section that you're referring to, I believe, would be the language regarding appointment discipline of employees. I don't have the exact line in front of me, but let me see if I can pull that up. But essentially, it's the reference pertaining to appointment discipline of employees of the school system, which is what the topic is for discussion for the oral argument.
Mr. Thomas, if I could have a point of clarification, because it says in the written statement that it's outside the purview of the Open Meetings Act. And it's my understanding that because it's outside the purview of the Open Meetings Act, because it is a function that the Board is statutorily charged with carrying out, that you do not have to use the B. 1, because it's outside the purview of the Open Meetings Act. So you cite the other items, the legal advice and the potential litigation, B. 7 and B. 8, to cover the two items that are in executive session. And then the oral arguments are outside of the purview of the Open Meetings Act, so you don't need to cite B. 1.
And that's the reference that I made when I said that the oral arguments are not within the purview of the Open Meetings Act.
And so I guess my question is, when we go into executive session on oral arguments, and oral arguments alone, what motion is made to do that?
When you're going into executive session for the purpose of doing oral arguments?
Yes.
The standard motion is normally that the Board is convening in closed session for the purpose of reviewing a personnel-related matter. So I think, Mr. Burrows, you're trying to get to the point of the specific language that Ms. Ahmed quoted. Is that what your point is?
No, I'm getting to the point of what Ms., I guess what I'm proposing, colleagues, is that we continue with our oral argument today, because that's what we came here to do. But I'm going to vote no on the current motion to go into executive session to discuss anything other than that, because I'm here in our, you know, you know, we, Ms. Williams talked about having things posted four days in advance, and clearly that has not occurred here. And so I'm going to vote no on this motion, but I'm happy that, you know, if this motion is to fail, to put a new motion on the floor to do our business and to do our work, to go into executive session for the sole purpose of dealing with the oral argument.
So on that issue, Mr. Burrows, I do have to bring to the Board's attention that there's a very important contractual matter on the agenda for this evening that I urge the Board to allow me to present. It is of a very time-sensitive nature, and failure to consider and take action on the matter could have detrimental legal consequences to the Board and school system.
Mr., were you finished, Mr. Burrows?
I am. Thank you very much.
Mr. Joshua Thomas?
Thank you. Yeah, I know that Ms. Ahmed was making a substitute motion, and I know that her question was, you know, is it out of order? And I don't know that I heard a clear ruling. I understood that it, there was, there was a potential discrepancy with what was listed for the public to review. But I didn't get a clear understanding as to whether it is in order or not, because if it is not against the law, then I would like to make that same substitute motion. If it is against the law, I don't want to break the law. I believe in following the law. So could I just get a clarification, Mr. Thomas, on that?
Yes. So I now have the written statement for a closing meeting under Open Meetings Act in front of me. That language does include the statutory authority under which the Board can close the session, under which the Board can meet in closed session. One of the categories involves, in order to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or other officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. So the point that I was attempting to make earlier, maybe didn't do so quite clearly, is that the Board's deliberative process on these types of appeals don't fall within the statutory authority required here. And also, the second issue is that this, is that the Board should consider those items that were listed as part of your notice to the public for this evening's meeting.
Mr. Thomas, Joshua, did you have anything else?
No.
Did I receive a second? May I have a second on the motion made by Ms. Williams?
Can I make one other point of clarification?
Others did second. Yes?
Right. So the other point of clarification, just to be clear, the two items that were listed as your personnel-related items are those on the agenda, and there were only two listed. So I believe that that is the basis upon which the Board Chair, and you can correct me, Dr. Miller, if I'm wrong, will not consider allowing additional personnel-related matters to be considered as part of this evening's meeting.
Correct. Colleagues, have you finished, Mr. Roger Thomas?
I'm done with my comments.
Okay. Colleagues, it has been properly moved and seconded that the Board of Education...
Madam Chair, I see a hand, another hand is raised.
Oh, it just went up. Ms. Adams, Stafford?
Yes, I'm just trying to understand. So we can't add another personnel-related question or discussion item to the meeting in the closed meeting? Is that what we're saying? We're not able to do that?
Correct, because the request was very specific to handle a legal matter.
Dr. Miller, just a point of note, we're about 14 minutes behind schedule, and I'm getting communication from the people involved in oral argument inquiring about the status.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All nay?
No.
No.
I have to take a roll call. Roll call.
Roll call. Ms. Adams, Stafford?
You come back to me.
Mrs. Ahmed?
No.
Ms. Boozer Struthers?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
No.
Mr. Harris?
No.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Montero?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
No.
Mrs. Queen?
No.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Adams, Stafford?
No.
I believe, let's see, that's, oh, my apologies, one, two, three, four, five, six, that's seven, seven.
So what happens now?
I'm counting eight. Am I miscounting here?
It's 14 Board members.
That would be incorrect. It is seven, Mr. Thomas. I was counting.
Seven, okay.
To answer your question, I would like to make a motion to proceed into oral arguments. I don't know the exact wording, Mr. Thomas, if you can advise, but solely to proceed into oral arguments to consider appeals of employees. I don't know the exact word, so that is my motion.
Well, as Mr. Thomas indicated, there's a serious legal issue, and that was the reason for the emergency meeting. And this can be detrimental to this Board, not just to one or two people, but it's detrimental to the Board, and it is a legal matter that should, and as he indicated, it's timely. So the fact that Board members refuse to have a closed session to execute this, this matter is really putting us, the Board, in a litigious, litigious position. That's, I guess that's the correct way to say it, Mr. Thomas?
That would be correct. But I believe the motion on the floor right now that Mr. Thomas has made would be to allow the Board to proceed into oral arguments at this stage. And I'm assuming that after the oral arguments are completed, the Board would then return to the previous discussion item at issue, correct?
Correct.
All right.
My motion is solely going to, my motion is solely to go into oral arguments and nothing more. And just to offer my comments to the Chair in response to your statement. I do receive that. I receive what counsel has shared. And so certainly, this should be something that's discussed on our February 11th agenda. Certainly, you know, do not want to ignore. But there are other issues that I believe need to be on tonight's agenda, and if they are not going to be, then I will not be, I have voted accordingly for a reason. So I've made my motion, and I know that there's been a second, so I'm going to be quiet now.
Just a point of clarification. Who made the second?
Mr. Burrows.
Madam Chair, are you going to take the vote on the motion?
Yeah, hands up.
Ms. Queen?
I just have a question, and I don't know, because I know the motion is to go into oral arguments, but my question is really about you guys saying that it's some important emergency meeting, but it's just strange that you can't even tell us what it's about. And that's what bothers me to me. Even if we're going to have a meeting, it could have been saying, you know what? We have an emergency meeting. We may need to talk about something that's maybe going on with Dr. Coulson, something going on with schools or something, but just to say it's an urgent meeting, and don't give us a topic or whatever. I'm kind of like puzzled about why, because it's like, as a Board, we're not being informed, but I just wanted to say that. But we get ready to go into oral arguments, so.
Okay, well, okay. Mr. Thomas, Roger Thomas, would you clarify that for Ms. Queen? Why, why it was not explicit?
So there are issues that have arisen with respect to the lobbyist contract that the Board previously approved with D.J. Williams. uh, previously approved with D.J. Williams and Associates, Inc. There are issues around timeliness, um, involving action that the board will be requested to take as to that contract. So that's why, uh, this matter was added, uh, as, as part of an emergency, um, action item, uh, for this evening. Uh, there is a memo that is listed on board docs authored by me to the board chair that gives detail about the issues, um, that are relevant to that contract. So again, I am urging the board to consider that this evening, because, uh, we do need to have the board take, um, timely action on the status of that contract.
Thank you so very much.
Failure to do so could result in further legal issues and complications down the road. And in this instance, a matter of two days could make a difference.
Thank you so very much. I, I did notice that, but I do notice that we, guys, we were in the midst of COVIDs, and knowing that things could not have been renewed, even people had probably been renewing their licenses, but that's a whole nother, um, thing I think we need to address. I'm not swaying with, this is so important, that this has the emergency call meeting today, but that's just my opinion.
Mr. Burrows? Were you finished, Ms. Queen? Mr. Burrows?
Yeah, I, I would like to say, um, you know, I think the, the motion that Ms. Ahmed raised, definitely had very serious legal implications for the board in our matters of great emergency. And so, uh, her attempt to discuss what she proposed, um, I absolutely believe, uh, uh, could have very significant, and, and has already had very significant implications to the board. Uh, and so, I believe her, her, her motion was attempting to inform the board. Uh, and so, it, it looks like all of these matters will be discussed on Thursday, but I just wanted to state on the record that, uh, the motion that she made is of signi- is of the highest importance, uh, and also pertains significant legal issues. Thank you.
Well, for the record and for clarification, because of the nature of the, um, the contract issue, I called an emergency meeting on the advi- uh, the, the advice of counsel, counsel, because as I indicated earlier, it puts us in a litigious position, and as he said, that, um, it can be, it can be detrimental to this board down the road. So, uh, we have a motion on the floor to move into the oral, um, oral appeals. Therefore, my understanding is there will be no closed, uh, executive session. Am I correct, Mr. Roger Thomas?
Well, at this point, the board has not authorized the motion or vote to go into closed executive session.
Okay.
Outside of the arguments that you're about to receive, which would also, I guess, mean that you would not be debating on the, uh, decisions on the oral argument. Is that what the intent is?
No, the, the intent is to conclude our work with the oral argument.
Okay.
Mr. Bur- Mr. Thomas, your, your point is, when we approve this, we're gonna go into, uh, a session where we hear the oral arguments, but as my colleagues know, after that, we normally go in the back room to debate and vote on the status of what we hear. We're saying, based on my colleague, Mr. Thomas's vote, we will hear the oral arguments, but we will not be able to vote and give those, uh, those who come before us any, uh, decision.
Well, it sounds like from what Mr. Burrows and Mr. Thomas said, unless they can clarify, um, their intent is to allow the board to have the debate and discussion on the oral arguments, correct?
Correct. I, I guess in the interest of time, and for just the courtesy of those, uh, move forward, can we just move forward?
Yes, we're gonna move forward.
Everyone can send their.
Uh, log into our Zoom meeting, all, all board members will Zoom.
We, we haven't, I'm sorry, I don't think we have voted yet.
Yeah, we got it, they're all in favor.
Oh, would you like me to call roll, Dr. Miller?
Yes, please.
Ms. Adams-Stafford?
Yes.
Mrs. Ahmed?
Yes.
Ms. Boozer-Strether?
Yes.
Mr. Burrows?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson? Well, actually, um, yeah, I'm not sure that her vote would count, given that you're just talking about going to oral argument. Mr. Montero?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mrs. Queen?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
All right, it is approved unanimously, unanimously of those voting. So, um, I believe, Dr. Miller, at this juncture, people would need to log off of this meeting and then log into the, uh, oral argument link on Zoom.